Good evening, welcome to this January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. To begin, I will call the meeting to order and call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. Do now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance. Okay, roll call, please. Bea.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawson.
Yep.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, if no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
All right, that takes us to the special presentations portion of the council agenda, item number twenty-five. And tonight, we are recognizing a proclamation for January twenty-third through January twenty-ninth as National School Choice Week. And the proclamation reads as such, "Whereas all children in Norfolk should have access to the highest quality education possible, and Norfolk recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in Norfolk to be successful adults, and quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of Norfolk, and educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy but also enhances the vibrancy of our community, and Norfolk has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children, and whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options." Now therefore, I, Josh Boning, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, do hereby proclaim January twenty-third through January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, as National School Choice Week in the City of Norfolk, and call this observation to the attention of all of our citizens. And I did invite the administrators of our local parochial school systems to be here to receive the proclamation, so I'd ask you to come forward from Norfolk Catholic Schools and from the Lutheran school systems. And nobody else can make a speech, you don't want to, but please do introduce yourselves to everyone here.
Bill Mofler, the principal at Norfolk Catholic Elementary.
Amy Watier, the seventh twelfth principal at Norfolk Catholic.
Juror Bond, principal of Christ Lutheran School in Norfolk.
Dan Saber, principal Lutheran High Northeast.
Very good. Well, thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your service in your various areas. As a graduate of a program of his own, I can say that it was my most enjoyable and fulfilling part of my education, and I think that's because teachers really do care, and they care not only about my academic well-being but my spiritual well-being, and I think that creates a sense of community that helps everyone feel belonging and connectedness to it, and your service to Norfolk and its families through what you do on a daily basis is lauded and should be recognized. So we thank you for what you do, and we want to take a moment to like that during National School Choice Week. So we will distribute the various proclamations and get a picture before you guys go. I know it's an energy-based basketball game, so that way you can get some... Now, if anybody wants to give a speech, they're welcome to, but it's not a requirement.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We will now move into the public hearings portion of the council agenda, item number twenty-six. We'll open this public hearing to consider an amendment to section twenty-seven dash seven of the official city code to update equivalent zoning classifications for property which may become the jurisdiction of the city by annexation or addition. And to kick off this public hearing, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner.
Thank you. This section of the zoning code, twenty-seven dash seven, has been in place for quite a few years. What it helps is when new land comes into our extraterritorial jurisdiction from the county. This makes it so there's no guessing as if you are this, a certain zoning in the county, then you come in as a certain zoning in the city, and so everyone knows what they're coming in as when that transition happens, and we try to keep them as similar as possible. So ag comes in as ag, single-family comes in as single-family, and we try to keep it as close as possible to what they're already operating in the county when they come into our extraterritorial jurisdiction. There's just a couple extra categories that Stanton County has added since we've updated this section of code, and knowing that we will more than likely be extending our ETJ here soon because of the annexation, I wanted to get this in place prior to that, so there wouldn't be any guessing on anybody's part.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions for Val? It says a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay, seeing and hearing no one, now we'll ask for Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, to consider an amendment to section twenty-seven dash seven of the official city code to update equivalent zoning classifications for property which may become the jurisdiction of the city by annexation or addition. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with a six to zero vote.
Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number twenty-seven, and look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-three approving an amendment to section twenty-seven dash seven of the official city code to update equivalent zoning classifications for property which may become the jurisdiction of the city by annexation or addition. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with a six to zero vote. Okay, with that, I will close the hearing and move to item number twenty-seven, and look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-three approving an amendment to section twenty-seven dash seven of the official city code to update equivalent zoning classifications for property which may become the jurisdiction of the city by annexation or addition.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-three.
Motion second. Any discussion on this, council, or further questions? Okay, hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend section twenty-seven dash seven of the official city code to update equivalent zoning classifications for property which may become the jurisdiction of the city by annexation or addition, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-three carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules and pass this ordinance on the second and third.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-three carries on second and third.
Okay, takes us to item twenty-eight. Would look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-one approving zoning change from a agricultural district to RR rural residential district on property addressed as forty-four oh four South First Street. As a note, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-one passed on first reading only at the December twentieth city council meeting.
I'd offer for consideration ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-one on second reading.
Motion second. And Val, can you just briefly refresh our memories on this, please?
Yes, thank you. This second reading is on a piece of land that the total is about a hundred and sixty acres, but they're only requesting a zone change on about three acres of it to RR. The remainder will remain ag. And we would recommend only passing on second reading on tonight, too, because we still do not have the Mylars that go with the plat yet, so we are hoping that those will be here for the third reading. We have been in contact with the owner for that request also.
Okay, thank you, Val. Any questions?
Well, yeah, I just got a question on that. Since we don't have that information and the third reading is a no comment, discussion or no discussion, should this be something we table, or is that not a concern?
I think I might ask that of Brianna or Danny. I don't know how the third reading would work if we do not have the plat and there's no discussion.
I have told the owner that if we don't have the plat, if I don't have the originals in my hand by that time, we would probably recommend that the zoning change fail, and that he is aware that he would have to wait an additional six months before he would request a zoning change again. I've contacted him a few times asking for that paperwork.
So if it did come to us, I guess for the third reading, we would know, I mean, in how you present it, we would know whether we have that or not?
Correct. I've given him a deadline to have that paperwork to be by January thirtieth, so that would be prior to this agenda being created.
Okay.
So that would be the following item after the third reading of the zone change, the next item would be the plat.
And we could put that in the staff memo that goes with it, too, that says that we have not received the information, and we would recommend that fail.
Any further questions or discussion? If none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-one carries on second reading.
Brings us to our regular agenda, and item twenty-nine. Would entertain a motion to consider approval of resolution number twenty-two-two dash one, establishing policies and procedures necessary for the use of design, build, and construction management at risk contracts for certain public projects.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for consideration of approval of resolution number twenty-two-two dash one. Second?
Motion in second. For some background on this, please, Steve Ramus, our city engineer.
This would adopt policies and procedures for two alternate project delivery methods, design, build, and construction manager at risk. Most all of our projects, or all of our projects, currently, we use a process called design bid build. So we get them designed, we bid them out at a hundred percent design development, and we build them. These two methods are intended to streamline some projects. They allow you to start the build process, fifty to seventy-five percent of final, what we would call typically final plans. So it allows you to deliver a project quicker than the traditional design bid build method. They are used across the state by other municipalities, other state government entities. You'll see them on what I call linear projects. The Highway two, two seventy-five being built right now, the Four Lanes, is a design-build project. A lot of your vertical projects at the universities and state colleges use construction manager at risk. They both have a real purpose. I would say, had this been in place when we were doing the skate park, we probably would have used the design-build method for the skate park project. The general differences in the two methods, I would say, design-build allows you to go down to a little bit smaller project, depending on the scope and type of project. Like the skate park, that was about a half a million dollar project, and that works very well there. It works very well in the linear project, like the DOT is doing on the Four Lanes. That is up in the tens of millions of dollars. The construction manager at risk method has a lower limit. It's a little hard to define, but I would say somewhere between three and five million is probably a lower limit for that method to be efficient in terms of the costs. But again, it does allow you to get out of the ground a little bit quicker. Both of these bring together your design team and your contractor. The design-build method, you hire a designer or criteria developer ahead of the design-build contract. They get the criteria for the project in place that allow a design builder to actually bid on the project and put a number on it. The design-build team then is one contract that brings the designer, engineer, architect, and the builder to the table. The construction manager at risk project, we would hire the designer, the engineer, architect, separate from hiring the builder. The builder is the entity that's in the construction manager at risk contract, and then you have your design contract with your architect. I think they both have their applications. I've worked a lot in the construction manager at risk model. I have had some design-build background back in the early part of two thousand. Again, it was a state highway project, and worked very well. So with that, I'd kind of open it up to questions that you might have around either one of these.
I don't have a question, Steve. I just have a comment of, I think it's a good idea to have this in our arsenal, if you want to call it that, because of different projects that we might be able to use it on where some other way of, some other method might not make sense, or this might be more cost-effective. So I think it's a good idea to have this as a possibility of how we go to bid for something.
I would echo what you just said and agree, and also say it also gives you an opportunity to do some very, you know, some design engineering, some value engineering in your projects when you know you can. So it gives you a little more lateral movement.
Pierce is a little start to finish, maybe a little quicker as well?
Yes. Yes, you're allowed to get in the ground sooner. You know, say in a building project, once your footprint is set, you may not have all the components and all the fit and finishes, throw all the floors done, but once your footprint's fit and you know what your foundation is, you can start bidding out foundation packages. As your HVAC starts to get in place and your electrical, you bid out those packages, get those components moving. A lot of times, those have very long lead times. Might take you six months, eight months to get your HVAC package prepared and on-site. So if you can start that early, as early as possible, while you're still building out the shell, per se, you know, all that other stuff is moving in the background.
Steve, both these techniques have, I don't know if you'd say become commonplace among government entities, but it's certainly not rare, right? There are other local governments that have employed both design-build and construction manager at risk for some time. In fact, I think we've modeled a lot of this policy off of some of those. You know, the state DOT, just within the last few years, adopted that as a policy, but I do agree with what's been said. This is a smart move, moving forward, helps, if anything, on larger projects to expedite the process and create efficiencies and save time, which can save money. So it's good staff work. Any other questions or discussion on this, council? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-two-two dash one is adopted.
Item thirty, would look for a motion to consider approval of change order number one F with Wretchens Construction Incorporated for the Fourth Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project resulting in a net decrease of twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll make the motion.
Motion second. And again, Steve, some background on this, please.
Sure. Mayor and council, I want to invite Dennis Watts to the podium. Dennis was the project manager on this. Dennis is currently our water sewer director. I would announce here that he has attended his resignation, will be retired from city at the end of this month, but we have recaptured him, and he will be a utility project manager for us for the foreseeable future. So Dennis, why don't you walk us through this change order?
Sounds like you can check out anytime you like, but you can never leave.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, what this is, this was a job, basically as a replacement of a tar line, sewer line that was put in the early seventies, started at about milk specialties, went down to Fourth and Monroe. Total dollar contract amount was one million, one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars, eighty-five cents. This is a decrease of about twenty-nine thousand dollars. Most of it was due to, there was a little bit of, you know, kind of some value engineering that Chain talked about earlier. We were able to reduce the bypass pumping by adding a manhole, some of that. The job is pretty much all complete, with the exception, we do have some seeding and a sign that needs to be replaced yet at Colonial. That will be done in the springtime. The one that I just want to point out, it's kind of just a small item, but there's a, if you're looking at the staff work, there's a deduct of eight thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. One item that was, is the contractor had bid, you know, had that much dollar in for regravel on the four hundred block of Northwestern. There were some concerned citizens wanting to see some crushed concrete on there. I believe we talked to Mayor and Steve, and so we ended up, basically the city has, Street has crushed concrete, so we did an interdepartment transfer and paid Street for that amount. So it's a little misleading, it says, you know, twenty-nine thousand, it's actually twenty-one thousand about. So it's still, you know, it's not a big savings, but twenty thousand is twenty thousand. So anyway, like I said, that job went real well, and should be completed early spring.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you, Dennis. Questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion on this at all? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item thirty-one, would look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-two authorizing and adopting a program for the expedited review of certain tax increment financing projects pursuant to section eighteen dash twenty-one fifty-five of the Nebraska Community Development Law.
I'll make a motion for consideration of resolution number twenty-two-two.
Second.
Motion in second, and for some background on this, Randy Gates, our city finance officer, please.
Yes, Your Honor. This has been around for a little over a year. It was approved by LB ten twenty-one in the twenty-twenty session of the legislature, and it's commonly called micro TIF. We've had a request, well, actually, several people have inquired about the possibility of utilizing micro TIF, and the City's Economic Development Subcommittee met on December sixth and voted unanimously to bring a resolution forward to the city council authorizing micro TIF. The council approves this, and a project meets the requirements for this expedited review. The council must approve the redevelopment plan within thirty days. It's not discretionary, so if you approve these, you'll probably be seeing most of these redevelopment plans coming forth on a consent agenda, I would expect. A redevelopment plan is eligible for expedited review if it includes only one project. Project involves repair, rehabilitation, replacement of an existing structure located within a substandard and blighted area. It must be in a county with a population of less than a hundred thousand inhabitants, which Mason County is. The existing structure must be at least sixty years old, and the assessed value of the property within the project area when the project is completed is estimated to be no more than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a single-family residential structure, one million dollars for a multifamily residential structure or commercial structure, ten million dollars for a project involving revitalization of a structure included in the National Register of Historic Places. The expedited review process greatly simplifies the front end of the TIF process. There's a one-page application form that's on the Nebraska Department of Economic Development's website, and that serves as the plan itself. So you've got a one-page, fill-in-the-blank redevelopment plan, and that's submitted to the city along with the required building permits. If it meets those requirements, city councils, I said, must approve the plan within thirty days of some metal. There's no redevelopment agreement, there's no hearings, planning commission isn't involved, there is no cost-benefit analysis, there's no but-for requirement. On back end, the word's about saying, but it's only for ten years, not fifteen years as you have in a standard TIF project. Resolution twenty-two dash two provides that plans subject to expedited review. They said it admitted to myself or my designee, and along with the application fee of fifty dollars. The resolution also approves a standard form of TIF note, which is issued administratively by the Community Development Agency, would be signed by the mayor, the chair of the agency, and the city clerk, the secretary of the agency. Interest rate on the note is zero percent, and the amount of the note is the estimated incremental taxes received over ten years. That'd be the maximum. Payments on a TIF note are made to the owner of record of the project real estate at the time of the payment, and the owner of record of the real estate is who the note is originally issued to. There's two years available to complete the project, and once complete, the redeveloper notifies the county assessor, and the county assessor determines if the project is complete and certifies incremental valuation to the agency. So it's a very quick process compared to a standard TIF program. Answer any questions?
I do have a question. So the projects under the micro TIF, will they count towards the percentage of TIF that a city's allowed to have?
They have to be within a substandard and blighted area. So those substandard and blighted areas, whether it's for a micro TIF project or another project, count towards that thirty-five percent. But I wouldn't envision us using micro TIF very often for a project that is not already in a blighted and substandard area. We've got light and substandard areas throughout the city, and if a proposed project is within one of those existing areas, then it would qualify for micro TIF if it met all these other criteria.
Randy, the criteria that's spelled out on here is coming from LB ten twenty-one, correct? Not city-designated?
There's not a lot of discretion allowed within micro TIF. If the council decides to allow micro TIF, and it meets those statutory requirements I outlined, the council must approve within thirty days the expedited TIF plan.
Any other questions, council, or discussion? Okay, hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, resolution twenty-two-two is adopted.
Item thirty-two, would look for a motion to consider an agreement with Davis Design Incorporated of Lincoln, Nebraska, for proposed additions and renovations at Tahazuka Park Sports Complex, as well as a proposal for an indoor aquatics center.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion second, and to hear some background on this, we'll hear from Nate Powell, our city parks and recreation director.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have an agreement with Davis Design in front of you, and this is to review the Tahazuka Sports Complex improvements and needs and develop a... develop a design for, for that area. And it also to look at the indoor aquatic center design and what that might look like as well. And looking at locations of these new improvements and facilities. It will consist of a, of a public input process. I want to make sure that we look, we talk with the stakeholders, the baseball group, softball. I even think soccer needs to be in this conversation. The aquatic swimmers, Y M C A, all those need to be involved with the, this discussion and, and this design. I think this is good for, for North Fork. It's going to bring just a really bright future for Tahazuka and some much needed improvements, I think, that we need out there. And I also want, you know, it'll also give us a clear understanding of the, the costs associated with what we're, what we need to come up with to make these improvements. Doug Burkink is, is here from Davis Design tonight. So if you have any questions for him or myself, I'm happy to answer those for you. And this is a budgeted item for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two.
Nate and maybe Andy, you can help a little bit, given Nate's just new, new to the job. The background, the impetus of some of these discussions, at least with Tahazuka, there've been ongoing discussions about needed improvements there. But I remember we also had a discussion about budgeting some of the CARES Act money toward studying and design for an indoor aquatic center. Anything to expand upon there? Is it accurate for the record in terms of the origination of these, these discussions?
That's correct. The budgeted funds that Nate referred to were from CARES Act funds that the city council has already authorized and put towards that. So he is a hundred percent accurate on that we do have funding budgeted for this. Really, a lot of this stems from a community survey that was done about three years ago or so, that identified a series of projects and needs that the city would have. So obviously athletics are very important in North Fork. Tahazuka Park is widely used. And I think that everyone can agree that there's a lot of work that, that we can do to make that place a pretty spectacular draw, to bring visitors and tournaments and, and folks to our community. Aquatic Center was one that was also mentioned in that survey as well. It got good support from the community. So the council's demonstrated, I think, over the last ten to fifteen years especially, and even before that, a commitment to quality of life. So I think it's important to keep these things going and, and continues to demonstrate our commitment to, to draw families and give people something to do here and more recreation and, and keep expanding on those we've already done. So absolutely, this is something that's been in, in, in the works behind the scenes. And now we're, we're ready to, to get a little bit more serious about it.
Thank you, Andy. Any other questions on this, Council? For either Nate or Doug, who's here from Davis Design?
I guess the only question I have is how will the process work to get the community input and the, input from the different groups involved here? That'd be a public forum or that would be public meetings? Or would that just be individual invitation for those groups to come meet with Davis and the city?
I think it'd be both. We've already started developing the stakeholder groups for, for baseball and also for aquatics. And I think a soccer group as well needs to come into the conversation. And then maybe a public forum to actually just bring about those in the community that participate in those sports, to hear from them as well would be important. So yeah, I think both would be part of the process.
Perfect.
Yeah, I agree. That's our plan anyway.
And then do we have a timeline where that'll come back on those conceptual thoughts and drawings to, back to the council then, to be able to look at and have input?
Well, yeah, worse.
Yeah, I, I think that's going to depend really on how our, our open house sessions go. I think, you know, the combination of having individual stakeholder groups invited in to give their input and then having your, your public meetings at a, at a larger forum. So just citizens are invited to come in and, and, and look at what they wish and offer comments and ask questions and really get that out there. It's going to depend on, you know, a lot of these projects that the council's done in the past, you kind of got to gauge it on whether or not a lot of people know about it, or if you're getting enough information out there. And if we feel like we're comfortable at that point, then we can, you know, we can move forward with the schematic designs and things like that. But if we feel we need more public input, then we can certainly do that and, and build that in. So I think it's going to depend, councilmen, on, on really how things go and how meetings get scheduled and, you know, all, all those things. So there's a lot of, yeah. It's going to depend on a lot of things, but hopefully it'd be nice to have some, you know, something for the public to see and release by, you know, late spring, summer. I mean, to really start getting people excited about it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you, Nate. All right. If no further discussion, Council, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Item thirty-three, look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-four authorizing purchasing under a state contract for a state other than Nebraska or from another vendor at or below the purchase price of a state contract for a state other than Nebraska without, without following the formal bidding process.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion second. And Lyle Lutt, our administrative services director, will give us some background on this, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. That's Lyle, Director of Administrative Services. Going to talk about this agenda item. We can, I'll give you the overview of it. We can go as deep into it as you like. So section two dash one one zero, the city code talks about the formal bid procedures, the process to go through to buy items typically in excess of thirty thousand dollars. In that section, you'll see the, the requirements of authorization to move forward with proposals to send out RFPs, notifications, on down the line. One of the components there at the bottom talks about purchasing off of the state and Nebraska contract or off of a larger purchasing conglomerate. In the past, we've had opportunities to buy off of other state contracts. And if you look forward in your agenda packet, you'll see another one of similar nature. But we haven't been able to connect the dots, looking Danny in the face and Randy in the face to say, yep, we can go straight off of a Minnesota state contract unless it's linked to the state and Nebraska contract. The addition of this wording will allow us to be able to move forward with those sort of purchases that have been bid out off of, straight off of other state contracts. That's kind of the general overview of the topic. What questions do you have?
This allows us to buy the highest quality product for the lowest possible price?
That is correct.
That's the only question I have.
Okay. I would also like to state, if you did look forward in your agenda items, that the, the next one, if, if this doesn't get approved on all three readings, the next one will get postponed until it does get approved. Are there other questions?
Appears not. Thank you, Lyle. Any other discussion, Council? Hearing none. Short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of North Fork, Nebraska to amend section two dash one one zero of the official city code to add an exception allowing the council to authorize purchases under a state contract for a state other than Nebraska or from a mother, another vendor at or below the purchase price of a state contract for a state other than Nebraska without following the formal bidding process, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-four carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-four on second and third due to no opposition and obviously an avenue for us to look at wisely purchases, wisely purchasing items.
I'll second that.
Motion in second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-seven sixty-four carries on second and third.
Takes us to item thirty-four, would entertain a motion to consider approval to purchase a pull behind attenuator from warning lights under a state of Minnesota contract for thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars.
Make the motion.
Motion in second. And Lyle, once again, please.
That's good evening, Mayor and Council. Will is not able to attend tonight. So I'm going to take a stab at this. And Stephen's going to come in off the top row if we need some help on the details on it. So attenuator device is a, a, a device, in this case, a trailer that's designed to protect road crews and distracted drivers should the event come around. Due in light of the recent opportunity to buy off of another state, Will having come from the state of Minnesota, found this device. Sounds like it matches up quite nicely to what is needed and leads us to this agenda item. Stephen, do you have anything to add? Or do you have any other specific questions to the topic?
So this is really a safety device for, for those folks?
It is called.
Yeah, this is a crash attenuator. It's pulled, it's kind of a trailer mounted crash cushion is what it is. It looks like a great big mattress being pulled behind a, some kind of construction equipment. It provides, as Lyle said, it's a crash barrier so that there's, if, if a vehicle isn't paying attention and they run into the backside of our equipment, that they're not running into the back end of a payloader or something like that or a motor grader, they're running into this crash cushion that attenuates that impact. So it's, it's a benefit to us. It's a benefit to our employees. It's a safer environment for our employees to be working in. It's a safer environment for, for the traffic to be interacting with us when we're out there doing construction. Originally in the budget, we had eighteen thousand nine hundred in there. That was a smaller attenuator designed, I believe, for about a thirty mile an hour impact. As we started to look at it and get ready for the purchase and with the larger annexation and the acquiring of more higher speed of road segments within the surrounding part of the community, it was desirous for us to move that to a sixty mile an hour crash attenuator. So it's basically double the capacity. And then also including in that, an arrowboard is, is an integrated arrowboard that is indicating to traffic that they need to switch lanes as they're approaching. The other thing that's on here is a traffic control trailer. We were budgeting independently for that. As it turns out, we've identified a trailer and have already started to make alterations to an existing piece of equipment that will become our, our traffic control trailer to more efficiently move traffic control back and forth from our yard to the, to the street and keep it cleaner and more functional for us. So we're able to combine those three budget items into one item to capture the thirty-one thousand dollars we need for the attenuator.
So given the, the scope of work that our street department does around the city, is one going to do the trick?
We do anticipate budgeting for another one in the next, in the next budget cycle.
Twenty-two, twenty-three cycle? Right. Thank you.
And to piggyback off of that, this is, I believe it was a third quarter purchase scheduled. It was historically scheduled to be a third quarter, but as you're probably experiencing as well, there's significant supply chain shortages in the timeframe. So in an effort to try and have that piece of equipment here in a timely fashion for when construction season starts, we're bumping that, requesting to bump that purchase up a couple of months so that we can have it in-house and ready to roll.
So, and so just to add to that a little bit, we sit down after the budget is passed in September, early October, we sit down and look at how we're going to, how we're going to expend the major capital improvement expenses throughout the year. And we try and balance each quarter. These are fairly small items, so it's, it, it makes sense for us to kind of bundle them and move them up, move, advance them. And I think Randy could speak that we've also, you know, our sales tax, we, we like to do that because we just never know what's going to happen. But certainly the sales tax increase would support being able to move this or advance this forward.
It's always kind of fun to make a sweat and say, yeah, we want to buy all this stuff in the first quarter. And so we split it up. So expenditures try and match revenues to the best of our ability.
Not, not to make you sweat all year.
It's fun though. Got to do that. Got to keep them on. Other questions?
Yeah, I got, I got just a couple of questions. Where would, where would the public be seeing this? And then this can also be used for stationary and a mobile operation?
Yes. Yes, it could be used stationary or mobile. Most typical, I see them in, in a mobile operation. But if we're doing stationary work, say we've got panel repairs or something going on there, you could, you could have that sitting in front of that work zone. We'd probably be behind the arrowboard. Or in this particular case, it would have an integrated arrowboard. So it would be inside the taper, but ahead of the work zone.
For notification purposes.
Yeah.
So we would use this attenuator instead of a payloader for filling potholes?
You would, you would, you would pull it behind the payloader. So you'd either attach it to the payloader and pull it, or you would have another vehicle pulling it behind the payloader. But either, either way. So if we're out joint sealing, it'd be ahead of the joint seal crew. If we're doing other road repairs, pothole patching or something like that, it would be behind the, behind the pothole crew.
Okay. And an approval of this thirty, thirty thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars, does any training come with the attenuator from the, from the sales or from the warning lights company?
I would have to, I, I don't have the answer for that, councilman. I'd have to ask, I would have to ask Will, you know, what's included there in terms of the, the training component of that. The impact, from an impact to ten-year waiter, I would, I would have to assume there is, just in terms of after an impact, you know, what happens? How, how is that properly attached to the back of the vehicle? Obviously, if you're expecting an impact of thirty miles an hour, forty miles an hour, whatever that impact is, you want to be sure that that trailer is stable behind the equipment and not just going to twist or turn behind the equipment. So it, you know, it's certainly reasonable to, to anticipate that there would be training from the manufacturer with this piece of equipment.
We'll have, Will research that and get back, get an answer back to you. Good questions. Is there others?
Okay. Thank you, Lyle. No further discussion, Council. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to administrative reports. And item thirty-five, I would look for a motion to consider approval of the library's annual report.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion second. And to hear that report, we'll ask for Jessica Chamberlain to come forward, our library director. Jessica.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm here to present the annual report for the library. It is sometimes hard to quantify what happens at the public library and, and the true value that the library has for the community. But we do count what we can and we do try to quantify and measure what we're doing and putting out into the community as best we can. So that's what we put into that annual report. Last year was definitely a year of rebuilding for us. We are not back to the usage and circulation levels pre-pandemic, but they are growing, certainly growing for sure. Our kids' circulation of physical books is almost back to those pre-pandemic levels. So that was really nice to see this year. Because twenty twenty, our usage of kids' materials just was just so much lower than usual. So that was great to see that rebound almost all the way. Interestingly, the use of kids' ebooks actually went down from what it was last year. So I think some of those kids are picking the physical book over the ebook when they can. Our adult materials are up seven percent over what they were last year for our physical checkout. So that's still good growth. But our adult electronic, like ebooks, was up eighteen percent. So we still continue to see growth in those ebooks usage. So it's nice to see that. Looking forward for this year, we have a great, you know, year ahead. We have summer reading program that we're planning already. We're looking to expand the use of our makerspace. We actually have a new piece of equipment coming in the makerspace tonight. That's a result of one of the grants we participated in a few years ago when we had kind of our temporary makerspace. So that's exciting. We're going to focus on our early literacy programs like our Thousand Books Before Kindergarten program and then helping support the Imagination Library program that's here in town as well. So we're really looking forward to all of that. We're very grateful for the ongoing support of the city council and the city for helping us do all these things for the community and certainly open to any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jessica. Any questions? Thank you, Jessica. Any questions?
Jessica, I don't have any questions, but just a couple of comments. And over the course of the last three weeks, I've had four people, two from outside the community and two from inside the community, give you rave reviews at the library, not only on the facility, but on the, on the staff as well. So nice job.
That's great to hear.
Just to follow on that, not a question, just a comment, but thank you for your diligence and resilience over the last couple of years in unprecedented timing, making sure that the library staff was being creative and maintaining accessibility to programming for people. I know that was not easy.
Well, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion, council? Okay. Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate it. Okay. That takes us to item thirty-six, which is closed session. I would look for a motion to go into closed session for the protection of the public interest to discuss potential litigation.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion in second. Please vote then.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
As the motion carried, I would note again, this is a closed session for the sole purpose of updating elected officials on potential litigation. Asked during the closed session was potential litigation. And I have a motion to come out of closed session.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion in second. No discussion. Please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Okay. And that concludes this meeting of the North Fork City Council. We are adjourned.